The Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Work Session. It's Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022. It is 1:47 PM. My name is Ty Mensah, Vice Chair of the Board. Chair Commissioner Carolina Mejia is on Zoom. We have Commissioner Gary Edwards to my left, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell to my right, Joshua Cummings, Head of Community Planning and Economic Development, and some of his CPED team here to address Development Code Docket 827, Non-Conforming Code Update Critical Areas Ordinance. This is slated for half hour. We're getting a little bit of a late start, but hopefully we'll give a full half hour to the discussion here. Public attendance is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. So should I go right to Josh? Commissioner Josh, you're up.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. I am Joshua Cummings, the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. This item that's before you is one of those successes and progress that we've been working on for quite a while. And it's in that vein of the county's strategic plan to balance Strategic Initiative Number Six, which is economic development and the built environment, with Strategic Initiative Number Seven, which is protection of the natural environment. And I really think that staff has done a great job of facilitating the conversation with the Planning Commission over the past many months of demonstrating that it does just that. The Planning Commission is in the process or has made a recommendation. And this discussion will be for you to understand what you're engaged in and the initial requests to do just that in shortening the costs to our citizen applicants and the timeline that it takes to get a reasonable use exception for items that do not impact the natural environment. I'm excited about this. This is one of those ones where we took, you know, at the very beginning of the process, five years ago, the ones that were just right off the top that were easy ones to help in terms of eliminating permits, the don't need a permit for windows, doors, solar panels, the 200-foot square foot to 400 square foot. Those were all the easy ones that we were able to do. This one needed a code change. This one's going to save thousands of dollars for applicants and save tons of time while still protecting the natural environment. That water was brought in from Jamie. It's yours if you want it.
Okay.
I kind of did, but I was like, it's not mine, so. So long story short, you're going to get the details from the staff. The lead staff member is Ashley Arai. The reason that Brett Burris is here from our community planning group is because if and when this item is approved, it will be implemented by Brett's group. Brett's got examples of how this is going to impact positively to applicants within our group and how it does not impact negatively the environment. And then you've got the leader of the community planning group, Chris Chapeau. So I think we'll hand it over to Ashley. Is that right?
Yeah, thank you. So we're just going to go ahead and share the screen here. We've got a little presentation. And let's see here.
While she's setting that up, I'll say one more thing. This is an example of the Planning Commission working really hard to understand a topic and moving it through the pipeline. One of the most important things that we can do as well, we're fully staffed in terms of our staff. We appreciate all of that. We need to make sure that the items that are going to the Planning Commission also are able to move through to this next step. So this is one of those examples where the Planning Commission's done a great job. And I want to express my appreciation for their work on this item as well. You ready, Ashley?
Yes, I am. Thank you. So good afternoon, Commissioners. It's great to see you in person. As Joshua mentioned, my name is Ashley Arai, and I'm a Natural Resources Planner here at Thurston County. I appreciate you all taking the time to learn more about the proposed updates to our critical areas ordinance for existing non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. Sorry. Getting it to advance? Okay, sorry. Apologize for that. So today, we're going to go through a project overview, share what we heard from the public, as well as what the Planning Commission recommends. The direction the staff is seeking from the board is whether additional information is needed before setting a public hearing. So a little bit of background. This was officially docketed by the Board in 2020, and this project explores updates to language in the Critical Areas Ordinance, specifically the existing non-conforming code chapter, and that's Chapter 24.50. Development Services staff did identify this project in 2020 as a priority update that would save time and cost for applicants while still providing those necessary environmental protections. It will also bring us more in line with other counties here in Western Washington, which do allow administrative review of many critical permits for non-conforming single-family homes. So here are just a few areas that we thought could be improved in this chapter. Chapter 24.50 applies to any existing non-conforming uses, structures, or lots that were created prior to the adoption of the Critical Areas Ordinance, which occurred back in 2012. This project is intended to address a few of the challenges seen during the course of implementation these last 10 years. Right now, alterations to existing homes are limited to 50% of their value. This does make it difficult for owners to maintain or update them over time. There are also different standards for different types of impervious surfaces, depending on whether there is an existing roof or not. Additionally, permit requirements can be inconsistent with wetland buffers requiring more stringent review than stream and riparian buffers. As a result, most projects, regardless of their impact on critical areas, trigger a hearings examiner review, which can be more costly and time-consuming. We do have Brett here, our Building and Planning Manager. I think he had a few more specifics he could chime in on.
Sure. An example of how this code would benefit both staff as well as the citizens is those lots that are non-conforming, and they were built prior to the Critical Areas Ordinance legally established. The Critical Areas Ordinance is then, after the adoption in 2012, has stated that the house and many of the outlined structures may be now in a critical area buffer. I'll use a wetland, for example. So if someone wanted to enclose their existing concrete patio that was built prior to the Critical Areas Ordinance, regardless if it's previously impacted or not, it would take a reasonable use exception to enclose approximately 300 to 500 square feet, depending on how big the patio is. In addition to that, additions to those types of structures away from the wetland would also trigger a Critical Area Ordinance review under the process of a reasonable use exception. So a reasonable use exception, as stated previously, is a hearings examiner process. And that's approximately $4,000 and approximately five months and maybe up to a year, depending on the complications of it. This would reduce that process to an administrative process and then would still ensure the protection of environmental impacts or the impact to the environment to ensure that it meets the Department of Ecology standards and functions and values. So those are just some brief examples that I have ran across here in my tenure here at Thurston County.
So real quick, sorry. Is there a time and cost currently for that enclosing a patio?
So in that example, enclosing the patio would require a wetland report, which could be anywhere up to $5,000 to $6,000. In addition to that, it would require a mitigation report, which could be anywhere between $1,000 and $2,000 associated with that wetland report. And in addition to that, the cost of a hearings examiner or reasonable use exception is approximately $4,000. So if you take six plus two is eight plus four, you're at $12,000 to enclose a patio that could be as little as 300 square feet.
And the patio is already impacting. There's no further impact when you enclose a patio to the environment?
That's correct. And that's because it would be, in my example, it would be built on the concrete pad that already exists and existed prior to the adoption.
And what would be the cost in the future state since we're not?
In the future state, it would require a building permit application, which is based on the valuation of the work. So that would be approximately $500 to $800, guesstimating. And worst-case scenario, if it does go outside of that impacted area, a mitigation plan to ensure that there's no net loss of functions and values, which could be probably $5,000.
So it would go from $14,000 to maybe $2,000 at the most?
Yes.
Please continue.
Thank you, Brett. And so Brett provided sort of a preview of the proposed amendments are. So they would allow administrative review or review by Development Services to some small-scale projects that have de minimis impacts to critical areas. No changes are being proposed to the underlying critical areas protections. And if an applicant's project falls outside the scope of what we have in this package of code amendments, they would always have the option to go to the hearings examiner still for one of those reasonable use exceptions permits. So the proposed code updates are limited to two chapters of the Critical Areas Ordinance. We've got Chapter 24.03, which is definitions, and Chapter 24.50, which is the existing non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. The table up here summarizes the proposed changes. And in the left-hand column, you have current provisions, while the right-hand column is what's being proposed. So starting at the top, as we look at alterations, rather than being tied to the value of the structure, alterations to things like single-family homes happening within the existing building footprint would be allowed outright. And this is in keeping with other counties in Western Washington and the state's current guidance on non-conforming structures. Moving down to the next row, administrative review of additions would be allowed for projects on the side of a house away from the critical area. So you hear me say landward. That's what I'm referring to. But this would only happen if applicants can show the buffer no longer provides any environmental function. So in that case of a concrete patio where it's already been impacted or a driveway area. Right now, Development Services only has the ability to review enclosures if there is a cover on them, so impervious surface with some kind of rough structure that's already in place. And that last row there, and the current code Development Services may review projects with less than 500 square feet of impervious surface in the outer 25% of a wetland buffer. So the current code does allow some expansion within buffer areas. But in the case of wetlands, those expansions can only be allowed or can be reviewed administratively if they're in the outer 25%. With the change, changes being proposed, administrative review would be expanded to projects within wetland buffers as long as there's a minimum 100-foot offer or separation from the wetland edge to where the project is occurring. And this is consistent with how streams and riparian buffers are regulated. This change would provide more flexibility for applicants while still protecting the buffer area providing the most critical environmental function.
So real quick, Ashley, that last point that you made, I think, was an addition of consistency. So that we're reviewing it in the same way that we review other buffers.
So it's really important that we are still ensuring critical areas protection with this package of code amendments, even as a change in the review process might, you know, might be approved or occur in the future, that the underlying protections for critical areas remain. So critical area review permits would still be required. And those permits require, as findings for approval, a demonstration of known loss of critical area function and value. They still include an application of mitigation sequencing. And applicants still need to submit any necessary delineations and/or studies. Additionally, Development Services staff will have the option of requiring outside review. So that third-party review is already written into our Critical Area Review Permit provisions. And additionally, with this package of code amendments, for any chain or any kind of development within those buffer areas that don't provide environmental function, Development Services would be able to ask for a concurrent review by federal or state agencies or affected tribes. So.
Oh, sorry, Ashley. Quick, on that last point, how does that ensure environmental protection? So that's other agencies can make sure that we're doing a good job at ensuring environmental protection?
Yeah, so they have the ability. Other agencies would have the ability to review the permit documentation if there's any question that there might still be an environmental function there. So if there's a nearby tree that could still provide habitat or, you know, questions as to water runoff or things of that nature, we would be able to send it out and would allow for a two-week comment period or additional time if requested by those agencies. And this and that, that question ties back to what some of the comments were received during our Planning Commission process. So we did receive 11 public comments on the proposal as well as testimony from 10 people at the public hearing. Agency feedback was received by the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife to include an optional review for additions within non-functioning riparing buffer areas. During the CIPA review, we also received some additional agency comment from the Squawson Island Tribe indicating that they had no specific concerns. Going back to the public comments, the general themes included concerns about any undermining of the use of best available science, concern about increased human use within critical areas, and general support of the proposed amendments. Staff did try to address the concerns raised during the Planning Commission review process. We went back and amended the package of code. Yeah, sorry. Changed the package of code amendments to more clearly define the scope and review process for the small-scale additions. Also included that optional review by state and federal agencies or applicable tribes for projects in those non-functioning buffer areas. And so following four work sessions and a public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the amendments by majority vote of five to three. Three of the dissenting members did provide a minority report requesting the changes be folded into the broader comprehensive plan update scheduled to be done in 2025 with Thurston County. The minority report also shared concerns about the use of best available science and clarity around equity goals as they apply to permit review. And so that concludes my formal presentation, but I am happy to answer any additional questions. As I mentioned, the next step is soliciting or asking for feedback directly from the public in a public hearing.
So we bring it at the Board so direct. We bring an AIS to the Board meeting for them to approve a setting.
Yes, and ideally, that would be sometime in September.
Ms. Evans?
Looks like somebody put a lot of work into it. Since that's top share.
Yeah.
Really looks good. I obviously haven't dove into it completely.
Sorry about that.
I like the idea of common sense coming into play here.
And balance, and the balance with the natural environment. That's really an important piece of it to us. Commissioner Mejia?
Yeah, so my questions are in regards to the minority report that was talked about, and the equity concerns. And what were those comments based on?
Yeah, so the, I think it was trying to clarify if the reasonable use exception or the hearings examiner review process is so expensive, it might not be equitable for people who don't necessarily have means to go through that process for a small addition or whatnot versus going through an administrative review. But clarifying what those specific equity issues would be to sort of narrow in on what updates would be needed to the non-conforming code sections of the Critical Areas Ordinance to address the needs more directly of people that, you know, may want to add on to their homes or make updates to their homes.
Thank you. And just for clarification, the next step in this would be to set a public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Helen, did you happen to be the author of the?
I happen to be the lead author of this, so I can.
I'm going to ask you to join us just because I wasn't 100% clear about your answer to Commissioner Mejia's question. And so why not just hear it from a person here?
Thank you. Yeah, the equity issue, the way we came to that is because we were trying to find out sort of what the driving issues were that brought this matter before us as a planning commission. And that's where that equity issue emerged, was that we were hearing that there was concern that people of limited means were not able to go through the hearings examiner process, that it was too expensive. So this was one reason why it might be desirable to change the process to make it more affordable. However, that doesn't mean that the minority agreed that the solution proposed was the correct solution on this matter. And in fact, I think that it might make more sense to look at this as an issue of equity of access to the hearings examiner rather than a matter of changing environmental regulation. That the real, it sounded like the fundamental issue was more about people not being able to afford to do things that require going to the hearings examiner. So, you know, that's the nuance of it. And in fact, in the minority report, we pointed out that the problem with changing it to administrative review is that it takes away the principle upon which the requirement of going to a hearings examiner is based. And that is that it needs to be considered on a case-by-case basis. And let me see if I have you. You can look in the minority report for, yeah, that it takes away the whole purpose of the reasonable use exception process. And we were concerned about that. We think that there's a reason why it was given a reasonable use exception process and that lowering the cost for low-income people is not sufficient reason to change that, that there might be other solutions. And we did talk about that, how, you know, it might be possible to look for middle ground, but we didn't have a chance to discuss that. And it seems like that might be more in the direction of providing some means for people to get access to the hearings examiner and can't afford to do it now.
Commissioner Mejia, does that capture the answer to your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you so much, Helen. And I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were there.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask, we have a few minutes here. Let's see. A lot of this is going a little fast for me, I'll have to say. The code updates, you have like a little chart of three. Are those examples? Are those the only three that are going to be subject to the new? You know what I mean? You've got a chart of, somebody wants to do an alteration within an existing footprint, it's 60% of the value. Okay, they get to, they're not limited to 50%. Then you've got an example of decks, porches, and patios. And then you've got the 50% square feet of impervious surface. Are those the only things in the code changing? Or are those examples of something that's broader or more vague?
Those are the substantive changes. There's also like clarification on when a bond needs to be submitted for restoration work and, you know, just smaller changes to make sure it's consistent with Title 24 updates that have happened, these other areas.
So in terms of land use applications, those are the only three areas.
Yeah.
And those three small areas have a big impact. Sorry, I didn't refresh.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's funny because, I mean, and I'm sure that's where it's coming from. I've heard complaints about situations that fall directly within, we need at least two of these. So I know that they're real. And so when you say in the previous slide, "small-scale projects subject to administrative review", then that's what you're defining in this chart. And those are the three small scale that would go from a hearings examiner to a.
Administrative.
To administrative review. And I'll ask you guys, I mean, I haven't seen the minority report. Is it, is it? The summary of the minority report sounded kind of high level. Were there any specific objections to the, one of the examples? Like, oh, the first two are okay, but you shouldn't be allowing pervious surface, you know, within 100 feet. Other than this, you know, 75 feet versus 25%, versus 25%. I mean, or was it just, was it just the elements that you've got here on the slide about equity, best available science, review it at the time of the comp plan update?
So we talked about the equity one. The comp plan one, I think, is more clear. It's sort of looking at it in the context of a larger comprehensive plan update or updating the Critical Areas Ordinance. The second one, the application of best available science, was as it pertained to those non-functioning buffer areas. So like that area on the landward side of a house. Department of Ecology has very clear standards for non-functioning buffer areas. They call them functionally-isolated buffer areas. And they've been clear in their literature for years that those areas don't provide any environmental benefits to wetlands because they've been impacted. Where you start moving to a riparian and stream buffers, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife doesn't have as clear standards on it. When I did talk to an agency representative, the one who submitted comments, he said that it is a concept that they're familiar with. They were interested in seeing how this plays out. And that was one of the reasons that they said that they thought concurrent review would be helpful. But that's where like application of best available science for riparian and stream buffer areas was, to be more specific, what that section of the minority report talked about.
And again, just to remember, nothing in this item changes any of our critical areas ordinance. We still need to do all of the environmental protections. And this added benefit that Ashley is talking about is that US Fish, that, excuse me, Fish and Wildlife provides a second review if they so choose to make sure that we're doing just that.
So you backed into my next question, which was, I didn't catch what you said about what the input from WDFW was. And is that, is it about concurrent review? I'm not tracking.
They submitted a comment saying that they would like concurrent review for these non-functioning buffer areas. They would also like to review, when we get the application in, they'd also like to see it to make sure.
That's something that's new, and they don't do that now, right?
They do not do that now, no. And so we, to make sure that the permit, permit application just wouldn't be put on hold forever, we did shorten that to a two-week comment period, which is similar to, you know, the comment periods that we allow for other agencies and other permit processes.
So from a perspective, we're adding environmental review in that two-week comment period for Fish and Wildlife.
From the agency with the expertise.
Thank you. Okay, well, that's interesting. Commissioner Edwards, anything more before we?
No, I'm pretty content. They've done a lot of work on this.
Commissioner Mejia, before we break? Any questions?
Yeah, so my question is more on kind of how the process will work, right? So this will go for a public hearing. And then after that public hearing, does it come back to the commissioners to discuss like either changes? Or how does it work?
Yep, so we'll schedule a public hearing in which the commission will take comments. We'll compile those comments. You will take them that day. We'll close the public or the Board, we'll close the public hearing at that point. And then we typically bring back the item, depending on how big the item is, at a Tuesday morning meeting, or we'll set up another briefing depending on the wishes of the Board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Should we bring AIS to set a public hearing? I'm over. Do you want to have that decision on Tuesday or?
Tuesday.
Yeah. All right, so we don't have to do?
No decisions today.
And is the, whatever we got from Planning Commission, is that in our packet here that I just didn't see or?
It should be an attachment to your packet. Has the recommendation letter with the attached minority report.
Okay, then I'll have that. I'll review that for Tuesday, and we can take it up then.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lord.
Thank you. Good job. Love your work.
Thank you.
Good job, Planning Commissioner.